Good morning. It's Wednesday, November 12, 2014. We're in the Senator Hearing Room, Cordial Square, 555 Court Street for a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And we have people here. That's always encouraging. We start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I can admit it now. I've been gone for a couple of weeks. Walk right in. And I should congratulate both of you on elections, so good-for-me opportunity to work with you some more, let you carry me along for a little while longer. Our first item's always public comment. We don't have anybody signed up, so we'll move right to the consent calendar. It looks like one of the shortest I've ever seen, so who would...
I think that's mine, then. So, Mr. Chair, I would move today's consent calendar. Just two items. Under Finance, approve an order to write off the balance of a system development charge receivable account that appears to be non-collectible. And under Health, approve an order scheduling a public hearing on November 26, 2014, for Administrator's recommendation regarding Idana-Detroit Rural Fire Protection District to renew franchise for the Number Seven ambulance service area.
I'll second.
All right, it's moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We have an action item that we'll take care of after a public hearing scheduled at 9:30, so we'll move to our second items under Health. Consider approval of an order appointing Ann Hill, Katie O'Kelly, Sheena Watkins-Andrews, Drew Wright, Michelle Kimball, Jeffrey Eberts, Eric DeVal, Floria Erickson, and David Beam to the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Committee. And we have a number of people, but it says Rod Cawkins, Carrie Moller, Kathy Crocker.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are super excited about this opportunity to introduce you to some new candidates for this newly-formed committee that will help inform the Health Advisory Board on issues of intellectual developmental disabilities. And the candidates that you're going to meet here today are very qualified, very diverse, and will come at this issue from a lot of different perspectives. So, we're really excited about their knowledge and expertise in this issue. Carrie, would you like to say?
Yes. We have four of the nine candidates who are before you today. The focus of the Intellectual and Developmental Disability is to help inform the Health Department on services and issues related to serving members with intellectual disabilities. As you know, we've got some really significant changes in the state with the K Plan, and these group of qualified folks, as Kathy indicated, will help direct our services in the future. So, thank you for having us this morning.
introductions?
Hi, I'm Floria Erickson, and I work with Partnerships in Community Living. I've been employed there for almost 24 years now, and we provide a variety of services, residentially and employment, development services in both Polk and Marion County predominantly. So, I've had the pleasure of working a lot with Marion County case managers and families within the county, and we're just really excited. I'm excited at the opportunity, and PCL in general, to be able to participate and have a put-together networking and collaboration and respond, as just referenced, around the K Plan and figuring that out. So, I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeffrey Scott Ebers. I use my middle name Scott. I'm the parent of two kids on the spectrum, autism spectrum. One that is very severe, and the other is at the very high end, Asperger's, high functioning. I've had about 15 years in public service, and now I run my own business because the family demands that I'm home more with the children. And I also run a program, an in-home care program. I manage staff. The K Plan directly impacts my family, and so I have a stake in what happens. And so, I'm deeply vested in the DD system here, and I'm so glad that you guys have decided to make this committee happen. This is a very big step, I think. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Drew Wright. I am a direct support professional with PCL, and so I do the direct line in-home care for adults with developmental disabilities. And when I heard about this committee, I was very excited to apply because this is a passion of mine to help this community and to help advocate for their cause and to help better support them in the services that they receive. So, I'm excited about this.
My name's David Beam. I'm an advocate for disability people. I run for Governor twice in the history of Oregon, and I run for City Council for Salem area, for Salem area. And I do a lot of volunteer work through the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod?
So, I think it's great we can have four of the nine here today. We're excited to get this going. As you know, the board considered and passed the bylaws for this committee. Next week at the Health Advisory Board, that board will appoint the interim chair for the first six months so that we can get the committee up and start having meetings. It's great to have people here, and especially, I want to thank David for providing a lot of the impetus to get this to happen.
All right. Go ahead.
Well, thank you all for being here, and thank you for being willing to serve. This is a very, very important committee, and so we're just so thrilled that we can get this up and going. And at least one of your members has been urging us on all summer long, so we're so glad that this day has finally come. So, Rod, this K Plan that Carrie talked about, and so this is requiring us to ramp up services, probably more people will be served, people will be served in a different way. Can you describe that a little bit? And then, the second question, second part of that question, is that there is some money that's required to do this in terms of increased staffing, and the legislature is going to be considering that. There's actually a decision package that's being proposed by the Department of Human Services. What would be the role of this committee in helping perhaps legislators understand what the impacts are for Marion County?
So, the K Plan is one of the changes that has happened within the developmental disability and system this past year. It's actually a Medicaid waiver K, and I think it's the K, so that would be like, I think, the 11th change to the federal waiver. It actually provides an impetus for more person-centered planning and more specific requirements around assessments and how those assessments and tools then lead to plan for care and hopefully funding for those appropriate levels of care. I've got to say that it's been a very chaotic year within intellectual and developmental disability system with all the changes. I think now what we've identified are some issues of where funding is needed with these changes. It does require more staff time, and it does require different levels of support for the individuals receiving services. So, hopefully, that's what we're going to be hearing in front of the legislator this coming session. This particular board, I'm sure we'll weigh in on that and talk with the Health Advisory Board about that, and of course, those boards advise Commissioners too. So, we'll be hearing from them about what the principal issues are.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. All right. Thank you all, and Rod. And I don't know where I go with this. I have a granddaughter that gets some of these services, so it makes it real personal to me, and I guess it shouldn't be that way, but obviously, as Jeff can attest, I know the effects, and any help is certainly welcome, and I hope this is a brighter day for the people needing those services here.
Thank you.
All right. So, do I make a motion to approve?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of an order appointing Ann Hill, Katie O'Kelly, Sheena Watkins-Andrews, Drew Wright, good to see you, Drew, Michelle Kimball, Jeffrey Eberts, Eric DeVal, Floria Erickson, and David Beam to the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Committee.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve these members to the Intellectual Development Disabilities Advisory Committee. Any further discussion? All right. Call a question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, Dave's been lobbing us all about a year or so. We're on our way. The next item also involves Rod Cawkins. Consider approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Health and Sciences University for $128,500 for the Cocoon Project. Rod?
So, I don't have much support on this one. Everybody's taken off.
Oh, they're all leaving you. What does that say?
So, Cocoon is basically the Oregon Care Coordination Program. It's part of the funding that comes to us through maternal and child health, or Title Five. The contract with Oregon Health Sciences University is a subcontract. They get funds to make sure this care coordination happens throughout Oregon, and they contract with us to make sure it happens within Marion County. We work very closely with Oregon Health Sciences University because what Cocoon's about is kids with very specialized medical needs. The eligibility ranges from birth through 21. Most of our visits, home visits by public health nurses, happen at the younger ages to make sure that families get hooked up with the proper medical care they need. And oftentimes, that's care that's provided up in Portland because of the specialty nature. A lot of genetic diseases, really traumatic birth outcomes, things like that, that leave a need for care throughout lifespan, oftentimes is what characterizes these kids. Anyhow, this is part of the funding that we get for Cocoon. We actually have a team of about six public health nurses and some public health educators that work with the families. This funding really supplies funding for most of a public health educator and a public health nurse home visitor, and it's from October through September. It is late in coming to us. We did not receive the documents until mid-October from Oregon Health Sciences. So, I'll stop there and answer any questions you have. Oh, let me just say that last year, we took a look through the Cocoon program, through this public health nursing, home visiting program. We served 267 families, and that was about 2,700 and some home visits that occurred through our team here in Marion County. So, it's a lot of care.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, Rod, would that, the home visit you sent me on with a nurse when I first got here, was that one of these under this particular program? We went out and saw a baby who was about 18 months old, was born at 2 pounds and...
I think, and you went with Jean DeJarnet, I believe, one of our...
I can't remember who.
Maybe not. Anyhow, yes, this is exactly that group of kids and their families. And you could see kind of how important it is to do weights and measures and make sure that the child is progressing and...
Developing properly.
And continuing to develop, and then addressing any hiccups in that development. Yeah. Yeah, 2 pounds is a very difficult birth weight, and it carries a lot of implications down the road.
Yeah. It was really a great experience, and I think it's one of those things that people, our citizens, don't know, that type of work that's going on, and what a difference it makes in preventing further services that are needed. So, thanks for exposing me to that.
Rod, I think I know the answer to this question, but it's just that it's here on our schedule today. Is there any downside to this? I mean, there's nothing to decide. You either accept or don't accept. Is there any limitations or restrictions or requirements that come with this money that I don't see?
Well, all money comes with strings, as you well know, Commissioner, but I think the strings here are positive ones for our community. We're required to provide home visiting. Obviously, it's a performance. We invoice against this money as we provide home visits to the eligible families.
All right. Anything else?
Well, it's just a wonderful program, and it's something that's so critical to our community. I was just thinking, I mean, yes, 2 pounds is really significant, and this is a very important program, but when I was born, a public health nurse went to every home when children were born. So, now we've had to decide that, you know, we're really narrowing it down to the ones that are really high-risk, I think. But I think a public health nurse home visit program, and research has shown that it is so effective in helping children be healthy and avoiding failure to thrive and all of the other concerns that go along with childbirth. So, I'm very supportive.
Okay.
I'll go ahead with that, then, and make a motion to approve the Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Health and Sciences University for $128,500 for the Cocoon Project.
I'll second.
All right. It's moved and seconded to approve the Intergovernment Agreement on the Cocoon Project. Any further discussion? Then I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and thank you, Rod. Are we done with you yet, or let me turn the page?
Not yet.
All right.
It's like a bad penny, Sam.
You're down to even Carrie left you, so let's see. We consider approval of a contract for services with Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network for the Health Department to receive $368,000 for the development of the Assertive Community Treatment Program. So, again, Rod, go ahead.
So, if you remember, almost a year ago, we were going through a round of competitive applications for mental health funding, for additional funding that was coming down. And some of those applications were directed toward county applying, being the applicant. Some of the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network and some the Coordinated Care Organization, so Willamette Valley Community Health, our local Coordinated Care Organization, was the applicant for this particular program. I think that, let's say there've been some delays in getting this money on the street, and I think that we, you know, the awards to the Coordinated Care Organizations were something new for them. I think that they were slow in coming to the Coordinated Care Organizations because the state mental health program really didn't know how to get those contracts out and amend those contracts for specific language that covers programs like this. And so, in any event, the long-awaited funding for the Assertive Community Treatment Program is here. What this program is, it's an evidence-based program. It's very intensive. It requires a ratio of about one professional to 10 people receiving services. These are mental health services by and large, and it means that we are reaching out into the community and spending a lot of time with the 10 individuals on somebody's caseload and supporting them in ways that allow them to function more independently and at a lesser level of housing care or hospital care than would otherwise be possible. It's approved program that has shown its impact in a number of communities. We have been doing a, I guess I would call it an ACT light, not at full fidelity, because having full fidelity really requires an intensive amount of funding and effort. Now that we have that funding, we're more than happy to make that extra effort to reach fidelity. So, as you saw, the contract calls for much of that $368,000 to be paid on initiation of the contract, and then services billed in lesser amounts throughout the coming year. That upfront payment is to make sure that our program achieves fidelity. And the Center for Excellence in Southern Oregon, actually, we worked with them and supported employment. We have a program there that is up to fidelity standards. We will now have them as our mentors as we reach fidelity for the Assertive Community Treatment Center.
All right. Go ahead.
Couple of questions. So, thank you, Rod. So, I'm reading through the documentation and noticed, I mean, this just kind of reiterates what you said, that the CCO signed the grant award in April, right?
Yes.
And then, the BCN didn't sign the grant award with the CCO until, and I signed this for the BCN, that's what caught my attention, on August 13th. So, then there's two reporting deadlines that have already passed, July 15th and October 15th. So, the question I have, I guess, is how is the Oregon, is there, with the Oregon Health Authority, is that correct? The money's come out of OHA, right? So, how are they going to respond to the late start? And are we going to get extra time even if we don't get extra money? We'll be able to, will we be penalized? I guess, you know, those are the questions in my head, so.
My understanding is that some of the work toward fidelity has already occurred on our part. We've been attending the webinars and things like that. We haven't been able to put people on the ground to the extent we want to. As I said, we had an existing ACT light team, so many of those, some of those folks are actually going to be part of the ACT team. So, it's basically, I think that there's not going to be a penalty here to Marion County as long as we reach fidelity. I think some of the funding continuation depends on getting the program to fidelity. And fidelity means that, meeting a whole bunch of standards, like having people trained at a certain level, having a number of visits happening, having the right ratios, which is about 1 to 10, as I said, in terms of caseloads, those kind of things. In the past, we've had higher caseloads than 1 to 10, so that's one of the things. We need more people trained, case managers trained, to be able to reduce that ratio to the level that's going to meet fidelity.
Okay, so, let me just reiterate what I'm hearing or what I'm reading also. So, the contract's retroactive because of the, and so you've already started but weren't really able to hire anybody because you didn't have the money, and it looks like there's kind of a big balloon up front, and then payment's coming, so we're going to be reimbursed for the work we've already done since March. And then even though two, and all the money's going to be distributed by the end of this biennium, so we won't lose any money. So, as long as we reach the fidelity levels, having missed two reporting periods isn't dire. Is that...
That's my understanding.
Okay.
The state's aware of, I think we're not the only ones that have had a little bit of delay in rolling this out, although ours was pretty significant.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Ready?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of a contract for services with Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network for the Health Department to receive $368,000 for development of Assertive Community Treatment Program.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's moved and seconded to approve the contract for the development of Assertive Community Treatment Program. Any further discussion? Okay, don't hear any, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
No, we're just getting used to you, Rod. You can't leave now.
You want to do the solid waste management one?
I'd hang around, but I think solid waste could probably represent themselves a lot better.
All right. Our next item is we do consider approval of an order appointing, how would it be, Jeannie Collins? How do you do that? We'll find out. To the Marion County Solid Waste Management Advisory Council on a layperson position for term ending October 31, 2018. And good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Bickford, Environmental Services Division Manager for Public Works. Give you a little background. The Board of Commissioners actually created the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council back in 1989, a few years after our waste energy facility opened, and it was created to basically consider and ponder various issues related to solid waste management and ultimately make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on those such issues. Our council is a 16-member council currently, 16 positions, I should say, eight of which represent specific business and industry positions, and eight are actually layperson positions. Currently, for example, our council is now on a mission to consider ways to retrieve additional food waste for composting and recycling, because that's an area that they feel that needs a little additional work. So, Jeannie Collins, who's with me here today, has attended several meetings, actually as a citizen, and has been spectating in our meetings, and has applied for a layperson position. She was interviewed in early October by the Solid Waste Advisory Council Subcommittee, and at the group's October meeting, her candidacy was brought forth to the group and was passed unanimously as a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for hopeful seating and approval. So, Jeannie is a graduate of our Master Recycler class and has done a lot of payback hours already. And actually, I'd like to go ahead and let her tell you a little bit more about herself.
Thank you. I'm a retired CPA and airline pilot, and now that I'm retired and I've got time on my hands, I no longer have time on my hands because I'm busy giving back to the community. I'm working almost full-time now for the Center for Hope and Safety, which used to be the Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service, and I've been doing that for about seven years. I also feel really strongly about sustainability and enhancing sustainability in the community. And so, that's what took me to the Master Recycler Program. I've also been working on establishing our Earthwise Certification at Center for Hope and Safety. So, I've been, I've been working a lot on trying to help people behave sustainably, but I became interested in the council when I, when I looked at it in terms of being able to work more at a systematic level, being able to make decisions to help the community enhance its sustainability. And so, that's why I'm interested in being involved.
Well, I'll start. Jeannie, thank you, and we're happy to have you come forward. I'm trying to make out the connection between CPA and pilot, and I like to think is it costs so much to fly around you had to... No, but I have a big interest in solid waste and recycling, and certainly appreciate your willingness to come forward here and looking at your list, all the other things that you do, do, I'd thank you right off. Anything?
Well, and there are some big decisions that I think the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council is going to be looking at in the next number of months and over the next few years. So, your timing's great to be on there, and really appreciate your, being willing to serve. Thank you.
Now, I got to tell a story. No, I used to be in the garbage business, and about the time I was leaving, the county was stressing a program, and the collectors too, and I fought it, and rightly so. It was called cow chow, and they were taking restaurant waste just as it came and then feeding it to cows. But this is right when mad cow disease was going on, and it was just a disaster. And so, I kind of drugged my foot on it, and it ended. But I do like innovative things in spite of what you might hear, so anything besides cow chow, we'll certainly be looking at. Kevin, anything?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, in the night.
That was a new one.
You just, and then I went out and toured our generating facility where that cow chow comes out the other end, out in Almsville, where they actually generate...
That's different. That's...
But sustainable, I mean, you take the garbage and the cows eat it, and then we produce energy with their waste. No, I'm just, I'm off on a tangent, but we do have an energy facility in Marion County that's made from the dairy waste.
Right, that's a digester that takes manure and makes...
Right.
Let power out of it. That's legitimate. I'm all for that one.
I do have a serious question. Jeanne, what do you see as some of the challenges in the future for, for us as a county? Although, I want to recognize, we are one of the, we are the number-one recycling county in the state, and although we know another county to the north wants to think they're green, we are. And so, what do you see some of the challenges that we're going to be faced with?
Well, I think, as you said, I think the, the community has, has done a good job of getting people involved in recycling and sustainability, but I think the issue is getting more people involved. I think now there are a few people who are really concerned and a lot of people who just don't give it any thought. And, and I think probably one of the most important things we can do is to get everybody on board, well, at least more people on board, let's be realistic, but as many people as we can. And, and that means a lot of education about sustainability and about recycling and what individuals can do. And I think, so getting people committed to it, then will, will make it possible for us to move ahead in terms of sustainable living.
Thank you. And thank you for your service at the Crisis Center. Really appreciate that. Still wearing my bracelet from domestic violence.
Oh, wow.
You're a good one, aren't you? All right, anything else?
Yeah, because Jeff and I exchanged glances there on the, on the first in Marion County.
Well, they don't count, right?
Right, so tell, so I was very troubled when I was at the last Solid Waste Management Advisory Council meeting, to hear that there's another county that thinks it's in number-one position. So, Jeff, can you describe?
Oh, no.
Yeah?
Yes, officially, we are actually, in 2012, the last numbers that we have officially, we're actually second behind, unfortunately, Lane County. Not the one to the north, but Lane, we're still ahead of those guys to the north, but that was.
So, how did Lane County surpass us?
You know, I don't, I don't know.
What are they doing down there?
A lot of similar things. They just pick it, their residents maybe just being a little more proactive in getting some materials out. You know, then as, as Jeanne mentioned, really one of the biggest challenges, and that's been spoken about at SWAMAC, is we have very robust programs. You know, there's so many things that we go after, and really now, the push is just getting additional participation in the programs that exist. This, most of the low-hanging fruit, you know, we have programs to get that. I mean, and other things are more exotic and much more expensive, but trying to get people to utilize the programs that we have. Food waste is a good example. It's available curbside for residents in Salem and Kaiser. It is put in their yard every bin. But what they're seeing is it's being underutilized. And same thing with just some of the other recyclables where people, again, it's just, it's an education, as she mentioned, piece, just to get better utilization of what we have, and we can definitely make some big increases just by doing that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, for the record, that's the second mistake that I've made in, I think, the last two weeks, claiming the number-one spot when we're a number-two, and I appreciate staff correcting me on that. The second one was, I misstated the population of Marion County according to staff. We're only 320,000, and I think I said 360,000 last time we were here, two weeks ago. You weren't here. So, I've made two mistakes recently. I wanted just to note that for the record.
You know, you're still kind of new here. We don't always admit our mistakes, so.
Right. If we did, if we did that, the meetings would be a lot longer.
But most Commissioners never make mistakes, is the lesson I learned. Okay, back to the subject at hand.
Well, but can I just say on that comment, that when I went to my first national conference and wanted to talk about Marion County, I looked it up, and we were at 300,000 population, roughly, and 300 million in budget. It was just like 300 and 300. I just had to remember the same number, that that's, population's gone up, budget's gone up too.
330, 330, I think.
Oh, 370 on the budget.
Well, then we need some more people to keep the balance. Anyway, I got to get this group back in focus here.
Credit goes to Jan Fritz, who's watching right now and handed me a sheet of paper when I walked upstairs two weeks ago and said, here, you might want to read this.
Oh.
So, Commissioners, I'm Kathy Crocker, again, Volunteer Services Coordinator for Marion County. And I just want to, I'm here today just in support of this appointment, but I also want to just say how great it is to see people like Jeanne with a passion and finding a connection to a committee or a board or a council that can utilize her knowledge and expertise. She's super involved in the community. I encourage everybody out there to find their passion and to find where they can connect.
All right.
Is he ready for a motion?
Yep.
Right, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve an order appointing Jeanne Collins to the Marion County Solid Waste Management Advisory Council in a layperson position for a term ending October 31st, 2018.
And I'll second.
All right, it's been moved second, that we approve an order that appoints Jeanne Collins, Marion County Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee Counsel. Anything else? Don't hear anything, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Again, thank you, Jeanne.
Thank you.
I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it is now past 9:30, and there was a scheduled public hearing to be opened, and I'll do that now for the referral of Marion County Extension and 4H Service District on the May 2015 ballot. Tamara Gedge, Derek Godwin, just go ahead and start with you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tamara Gedge, Director of Community Services.
I'm Derek Godwin with OSU Extension Service, Regional Administrator.
We're just going to be really brief this morning, but I wanted to take this opportunity for our audience to get to understand a little bit more about what OSU services are, what services are provided in our community and the value added that they add to various sectors that make up our strong and healthy communities. So, Derek, can you go ahead and take that on?
Sure. Well, so briefly, our mission is to extend knowledge and change lives. Extension started, a little history nugget here, is that Extension started in Oregon back in 1911 and had the first county agent based in Marion County in 1912. So, Marion County has been recognizing that agriculture and 4H youth development is important and was the first county to start it back in the early 1900s. We provide educational services around three themes, healthy economy and communities, healthy youth and families, and healthy natural resources. And we do that through our, what we call our five education program areas, 4H youth development, agriculture, forestry and natural resources, our urban horticulture, which includes master gardeners, and then our family and community health programs. I'd be happy to take other, other questions or comments you might have about Extension. I will say that the, you know, where we are today in proposing the district, what this would bring would be a permanent source of county funds that leverages state, federal, and other grants. Right now, we roughly have, for every dollar of county funds that come in, we are able to attain another $5 in state and federal and, and another additional dollar in grant funds. And then our volunteer programs, 4H, master gardeners, master food preservers, master woodland managers, and so forth, serve many hours and they add an additional $2 in value for that. So, it's, it's quite a leverage. And then further, in addition to providing a permanent source of funds, this would greatly enhance our 4H youth development programs and in particular agriculture for local economy.
And just to recap real quickly, over the last year and a half, we've been working forward to this point, and by meeting with you all, meeting with the staff of OSU Extension Services and the Citizens for Marion County Extension. And we've been working on all of the details, legalities of how that brought us here today. And on October 1st, we had our first required public hearing. I shared a long history of what got us to that point, all the work sessions, all the board sessions, management updates, the work in the community, work of our citizen group, and really the, the support, the overwhelming support that we heard in those efforts throughout the community. We have received support from all 20 cities in Marion County for this, and they would like if, when this comes forward to the ballot, if you agree to that, they would like to be part of that boundary. So, all of Marion County would be part of the boundary that this particular issue is recommending. Today is the second public hearing that is required. And it's according to ORS 198.81, requires the Board of Commissioners to hold this hearing on the question of forming a Marion County Extension and 4H Service District. So, this is a, we already heard testimony and reviewed that information at the October 1st hearing, and we had that order initiation, and then today's order is to move it forward to ballot on 2015 in the month of May. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Tammy. I was just asking Gloria, and I'll ask her again, just to kind of recap, and Tammy just touched on it, the process and what we're going through, and then, and then the mechanics, I guess, if you could.
Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As mentioned, this is the second public hearing. Because there is a tax base that is included and a tax rate in this proposal, it must go to an election. You can't impose new taxes without voter approval. So, today's hearing would be to send the proposal forward onto the election. The next step would to be bring back a ballot title and an explanatory statement to the Board of Commissioners for approval. Tentatively, we would be looking at, the 26th is your next board session. If, when the board approves a ballot title and explanatory statement, we would then file that with the county clerk for the May 2015 election. After the measure's been filed, there's a period for anyone to challenge, or taxpayers' residents to challenge the ballot title. There's a short period for that. We could pass that, and then the PAC can form, a political action committee could form in support of that. Once it's filed with the county clerk, the measure is considered on the ballot, and at that point, county staff would not promote or oppose the measure, but they could perform educational, they could still work on it, educational, getting information out about the proposal. So, those would be the next steps right now.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, how long is it that, that stays open for potential challenges, the ballot title?
I believe it's about a seven-day period.
Oh, okay, so not a very long time.
Yeah, it's just a short period.
So, the PAC can form in December, then?
Yes.
All right, okay, that's good.
Thank you, Gloria.
Can I ask one question too? So, then, looking forward for the citizen group, kind of what are their plans roughly moving forward? I mean, just kind of generally.
Sure. Well, so the citizens group, and actually Kara Fisher is, is here today as the chair, they are looking at what steps are necessary to form a PAC and start the campaign. So, it's really moving into the, the final stages here. They have started meeting to talk about the various groups that would need to be formed, the teams, and how they go about that, everything from dividing up the county into regions, getting the word out, and providing public, public information sessions and sharing what's happening, to fundraising, to ultimately getting some support and including, I forget, the ballot statements, I guess, or, I'm not using the.
Ballot title.
Yes, the letters of support that go into the pamphlet. Sorry, I can't remember that, what those are called, but anyway, so, so getting all of those, those steps in line.
All right, thanks.
Anything else?
Commissioners, great. Good explanation. Thank you. Ready for a motion?
Yes, and it'd include closing the hearing, I guess.
Do we have anyone signed up to testify?
I didn't have anybody.
Yes.
But we'll look.
We have really important.
Thank you for spotting that. We do have some people signed up in support. We'll give them opportunity. The first is Ron Hayes. If you'd come up, introduce yourselves and your address, and then go ahead and make your comments.
Yeah, I'm Ron Hayes. I'm 17539 Mount Angel Scott's Mills Road in Silverton. I have three cities in my address. But anyway, I own a farm in Silverton, and I want to come out and speak on behalf of OSU Extension from a couple of things. As you guys were talking about one and two and things like that, Marion Polk Food Share, when I was there, was probably one of the first ones in the nation to convert their inventory over to nutritional-based inventory, which was important for the health of people we're serving. And it was that with the guidance of OSU Extension dietitian that we were able to do that. So, Extension was extremely important in providing that service. For me, as a kid, I wrote, I raised, was raised on a farm, grew up going to 4H, learned a lot more than just agriculture and animal husbandry. It was really about character building and a variety of different types of things, and I really support that program and still do in a variety of ways. On our farm, we've raised sheep and we've given lambs over to 4H kids so that they can learn those kinds of skills as well and are very supportive. My farm is, was owned by my grandparents. It was registered in 1927 as a farm, family farm in Oregon, and they used Extension, and I continue to use Extension services for that farm and the like. So, it's a long history, and I just really appreciate what Extension does for our community. I think also, from an economic standpoint and from a job standpoint, ag is extremely important to us here in this, in this community, and the support that ag gets from Extension is unmeasurable. Thanks.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Rick Goppo. Morning.
Hello, I'm Rick Goppo, 1299 21st Street, Salem, Oregon. I'm the president of Marion Polk Food Share, and as the case once again, I'm following Ron Hayes, which is, which is my honor. I just want to let you know how important OSU Extension is to Marion Polk Food Share and thus to the community. They are partnering with us on several different specific projects. We have our farm project, which you're somewhat familiar with, and we're growing quinoa. We're growing many other things, but quinoa's the interesting one right now, and OSU Extension is helping us document that process. And, and that could honestly be an economic driver for the whole region. It's also a direct ingredient to a burger that we're making. The Better Burger, as we call it, is a protein-based veggie burger. OSU Extension through, through the Center for, the Center for Innovation up in Portland through OSU Extension is helping us design that burger so that we can serve the families in our community. We have 53 community gardens, including four youth gardens. OSU's been instrumental, Extension, in helping us assist those gardens, designing what we're doing, both through master gardeners but through also the formal process of OSU Extension, on what plants are going to work best for us, what soils, and how to provide good education. They're also providing great support in our cooking classes. So, OSU Extension's just been a huge, wonderful partner for Marion Polk Food Share. But I want to make sure you know that this isn't about Marion Polk Food Share. This is about our ability to serve the families in our community. And there's about 16,000 children every month receiving food, support through their food share. There's about 10,000 families every month, and we're better at serving the community because of our partnership with OSU Extension, and that's all possible through you guys' support. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And Toby Habeck. If I got that wrong, just correct me.
It's Habeck.
Habeck. It was a choice.
It's a choice. Good morning. My name is Toby Habeck. I live at 7718 Crosby Road Northeast in Woodburn. I am the 2014 President of Marion County Master Gardeners, and will be the 2015 President unless something really unusual happens in our elections next week, since I'm the only one running. Our group, there's about 200 master gardeners. We are a volunteer group. In 2013, we provided almost 12,000 hours in volunteer hours to the county, enough to win the Mary Pure Mind Volaterism Award that we're very proud of. And I expect that in 2014, we will have more hours than that. We don't get any money from the county. Our, our money is solely earned by the master gardeners themselves, but we use the facilities and we rely heavily on the Extension agent, in this case, Mr. Neil Bell. And without the Extension support, we could not continue to run our master gardener program the way it is now. So, we are very much in favor of this ballot so that it can. So we are very much in favor of this ballot so that it can keep the Extension Office going and keep us going. I've been a master gardener now for seven years, almost eight years, and without that, I don't know what I'd be doing. I'd be out looking for something else to do. So we, again, want to say that we are very much in favor of this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want an opportunity to say anything? All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing and consider approval of an order placing the formation of the Marion County Extension and 4-H Service District on the May 2015 ballot.
I will second the motion with a clarification that the title of the order actually says we're submitting to the electors the question of forming the Marion County Extension and 4-H Service District, which is a nuance, but I think it's important that that is how it's framed on that order.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing and approve. Would you just read exactly what you had again?
Well, we're submitting to the electors of Marion County the question of forming the Marion County Extension and 4-H Service District.
All right. Any further discussion? And I hear none. All in favor then say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. And thank you all for coming in this morning and for your continued efforts on this pretty big project.
Thank you. Thank God to witness how the teacher keeps us in line.
Now, you're not admitting another mistake.
No, I just was corrected on my paper.
It was a clarification, it wasn't a correction.
All right. All right, so the last item we have here this morning then is to read the places we'll be together in the coming week. Most of them dominated by activities in Eugene. We'll find out how they recycle down there at the Association of Oregon Counties meeting. First item is 3:30 to 5:00 today, Wednesday, the 12th, Economic Development Advisory Board in the Commissioners' Boardroom, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem on the fifth floor. Thursday, 7:30 to 9:00, Kaiser, Marion County Meeting at Sherry's Restaurant, 4998 River Road North in Kaiser. Then Monday starts the Association of Oregon Counties Annual Conference, Eugene Hilton and Conference Center, 66 East 6th Street in Eugene. That's continued on Tuesday and Wednesday. So that'll dominate our whole week here next week. Anything else anybody'd like to bring up?
Well, so Mr. Chair, so there is no board session next Wednesday.
That's, that's correct. Thank you.
People tuning in.
And after this one, they'll say that's probably enough, don't you think?
I might sit here anyways just because I'm getting used to it.
Pretty comfortable there?
Yeah. I went to a really interesting, I went to the Marion County Chiefs of Police meeting this morning.
I was gonna ask if you went to that.
And we had our mental, the, was it the SRT teams, the mental health?
The court team?
Court team and the mental health officers that are, you know, riding, pairing up in Salem and out in the county. There was a, well, about 10 people that gave a presentation to all the chiefs of police and it was great. I took a lot of notes and some of the barriers that they're talking about, future barriers and some of the legislation that they're gonna work on. But it was great to hear. One of the things they talked about was the numbers of calls outside of Salem, Kaiser and Marion County that they've responded to has only been 10. So trying to get the word out to other cities jurisdictions that that support system is there, they were really pushing that. And Troy, the inner sheriff, did a great presentation on some of the leadership things that he's been at and talked about the, a recent conference he was at and how Marion County was kind of the role model and others were very jealous of what we're doing here. So hopefully during this legislative session, that's gonna really make a big difference. Kevin Campbell was there and talked about some of that. So it was great to be there and I will try to get there more often. I know you've gone a few times too, Commissioner, but they're doing a great job.
Good. So we, just as a follow-up on that, we are working, Hattas is working on a multi-page handout to provide so that there's a list of who do you call? Because that came up at the Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting, so that was kind of a follow-up that we did. So I was thinking of, that we would try to bring it to them. Are they meeting next month? Did they say if they're meeting in December or not?
I didn't stay till the end, otherwise I would've been late for this.
Okay, all right. All right. Well, if they meet in December, we'll bring it to them in December. So it'll be nice to go.
John?
I didn't say anything during the public hearing, but as you know, I grew up on a farm and Extension Service was so important to my family and, and the economics of the farm and growing the proper crops in the proper way. We also had a dairy and my four o'clock in the morning times was wonderful. But I think what, and my wife was a 4-H leader at one time, what 4-H teaches kids is, is more than the economics of agriculture and how to do it properly. It teaches them a whole way of, of living a life and honesty, frugality and doing the right thing to, for their, for their animals and their plants and whatnot. And I think it really did a lot to help me in forming my own approach to life. So I think what people don't understand, particularly the economics of agriculture, particularly in this area, how important Extension Service is for that. I think that we, I'm hoping that we'll be able to get out, particularly in the cities, and let city folks know how important our agricultural economy is, is here. It was important to me and in forming my life and life skills. One of the things that I, when I took history in college, I learned how important the Extension Service was in developing American agriculture through the years and really developing an agricultural system that's the marvel of the world. So that's how important Extension Service is.
Thank you. Interesting, Mr. Chair, there's a, John, you just, there's an article, I think it was in the Statesman Journal on Monday or maybe it was Friday, about youth work and the state and area. Did you see that by chance? And Regis High School and how the, so many of the students are out there and they actually talked about freshmen, sophomores, juniors that are returning out into the farms and working out there every summer as a, it's not the same work that you and I were doing probably when we worked on farms at 13. I was 13 when I started, 12 or 13, but just still that work ethic and what those students are translating when they go on to college and into their careers and they're tracking that was pretty interesting. Goes along with it.
So I think what that says is that maybe I need to block my calendar for April of next year to be out to help out, huh? Do we know when the election date is? I'll have to look it up. I was gonna look it up on my phone. Is it the second Tuesday?
I'm guessing.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll all be working on it seriously, so it's quite important in Marion County that that happens. Marion County proper. All right, anything else this morning? All right, then we'll call this meeting adjourned.